And Board, I apologize. I did not see the light on, so I flipped the switch for the power and killed our power after she had it all set up. So I apologize for that technical mistake.
Is it okay to start?
So we are streaming to our, the group in-house and we're recording in-house. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started and then we'll catch up with the streaming here in just a second.
Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. And we do have a couple of new faces with us tonight. Mr. Tedder, nice to see you here with us tonight. Your new position and Ms. Cheek, although you were here with our special meeting the other night, it was kind of a abbreviated meeting. So it's nice to have you with us too. So thank y'all for being here. So now I need the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda, approval of the regular session minutes for July 12th, 2021. Is there any questions about the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that way approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, discussion agenda. We have a discussion of population study.
Board, I have asked a special guest, Mr. Powell, to come this evening. Mr. Powell is a veteran school personnel with Forsyth County Schools who is taking on doing population studies for districts. I've spoken to several superintendents and asked for recommendations for someone to come and look at our population. As you know, we've had a declining population in Stokes County and Stokes County Schools for several years. And with looking at our projected enrollment, since I've been here, the five years we've been here, we kind of wait, hold our breath and look what we have at the beginning of the school year. And I'd kind of like to take a look out instead of looking at just the present to see where we may be headed. Again, I asked for other superintendents in the area, in our regional meetings for recommendation. Mr. Powell has come highly recommended. He has recently, and I don't know exactly how recently off the top of my head, he completed one with Surrey County Schools, but he's going to use some of the information he compiled with their data to show us what he, what he is capable of doing for us to see if the board would like to proceed with Mr. Powell doing a population study. So, Mr. Powell, if you would come forward and I believe we're going to have on the screen here
This is my phone. Can we make it a little larger? Okay. We're about to. Okay. So while we're doing that, I'd like to thank Dr. Rice, chairman and board members for letting me be here today. I appreciate that and I hope that should you decide to move forward, I can be of value to your business. So let's go a little bit about student enrollment that Dr. Rice asked me to look at. So if I were to look, tell you a little bit about me. I grew up in Kentucky, graduated from Clemson, Go Tigers. After forty-four years of construction facility experience, nineteen with a general contractor on the East Coast, and twenty-one years in Forsyth County with planning buildings, supervising buildings. Been through four bond packages, helping them plan and forecast enrollments, costs, dollars. And just as important, if not more important, is where are the kids going to be so we could be ready? Because some areas in counties decline and some grow and every county is different. So that's huge. I have worked since I retired, four years, I formed a little thing, LT Consulting, and I'm working with local Board of Educations and local counties. I've worked with Surrey, which has three school districts, Caswell County, I'm currently working on a high school there with them. Also work for Caswell County Government, Forsyth County Government, in addition to Forsyth County Schools. So I've been a little bit of everywhere related to schools. The important piece that in Forsyth County that ties in a little bit is where are they going to be? Where are the kids are and where they're going to be? That applies to everywhere. So I took, let me get this scrolling, there we go. So if we were to talk about a facility decision and what's the process? You know, for the big picture of your buildings and everything about it, you've got to start someplace. So you typically start with enrollment and birth rate. And then you can go into square footage of facilities for a check. And then where in the county, what is the growth pattern? So this is a table of contents from Surrey County Schools, report I did at fourteen and seventeen. And also for the other two school districts, actually worked for Surrey County Government because they wanted to do it across all the school districts on an equal and fair basis. So we started with these two, district enrollment, square footage, and county population growth. So in order to come up with those items, we've got to learn the local lay of the land. We've got to have inside information from inside the school district and outside sources, which are the county and the state. And so Stokes County birth rates, those come from state sources. Have to look those up, analyze and forecast, and gather that data over a long period of years. Then Stokes County planning and census data. And I'll hit that in a minute, but if you look at the census, you want to look at two or three past censuses, which is twenty, thirty years. Because you want to learn a trend of where you're moving, not where you're at right now, but where you're moving to. And then look at Stokes County's ADM, your past, your current, and the trend of what you're doing. Because that trend is how we forecast where we're going. We've got to know where we're at and then we can trend where we're going. Then look at plans and square footage of building. Because that helps us check that enrollment. It also says are the schools appropriately sized for the population in it? And are the schools appropriately sized for the trend of growth or decline? So it can go both ways. And then the state ADM as it's available. I'll show you a little thing in here that was put together with state and it has, it has a mistake in it, but that's okay. We can forecast that. When you see it, you'll go, it can't grow that fast. So we'll look at that. Then as we look, now I'm not expecting you to read all these fine numbers in here, but this happens to be a county, Forsyth. And you're looking at trends from nineteen sixty to twenty fifteen. And if you look at the county's growth coming up, this line, the county had steady growth. So it grows steadily. See if I've got any more notes. And sometimes that growth is not necessarily more people moving in. It may be people living longer, therefore they're in the census longer. Then you come to what students are more following is you've got enrollment and you've got birth rate. And if you look, these more go a length and a line with each other than the county's growth. I'm going to go back. This is the baby boom. This is births and the baby boom. And this is the peak births and the baby boom, sixties. Then it generally declined, had a little bump in it, but generally declined down to a point. And then it runs fairly level for a period and then it starts a slow and steady climb back to what I always call the baby boom echo. And the baby boom echo is a little bit where we're at right now. And since then, the birth rates, this isn't just Forsyth, this is Surrey, this is, this is across the state. Births are declining as families are smaller. So it's not any new news, particularly any geographic region. It is across the whole state, also a lot of national. The only thing that's really going to face that is move in, move out. Now let's look at the student enrollment. So if we took the peak birth and followed it six to eight years, we're going to hit a peak enrollment. Then we're going to continue the general decline in enrollment as birth rate decreased, a general level period. And then from this point, it starts to grow up in births. I'm going to jump over about eight years and I'm going to say now it's going to start a general trend upward bound until twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Now is, at that point, this chart was saying, are we going to grow? Are we going to shrink? Are we going to stay the same? So we're going to grow, shrink, shrink, or stay the same. And I'll hit the next. I'll show you this and how it works. Okay, so as you follow that, peak birth goes to peak kindergarten in six years. Those babies born then hit kindergarten in about six years. And if you follow them out a few more years with kindergarten, one, two, three, this happens to be around twenty seventeen in Surrey County. And their largest enrollment in twenty seventeen was in the third grade. In twenty and by grade level. And you follow them from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, just the peaks. They happen to have another higher peak in that same, that was six, excuse me, eight, followed the nine, followed the ten. And behind that, five forty-seven and six fifty-four is the number hidden in the green right there, six fifty-four. And you had five forty-seven entering school, so roughly a hundred left, left students district wide from K to three. So that was a twenty percent decline going backward from third grade. And if you came over here to third grade, you said, well, this is a fifteen percent increase as you go from five to three. So the decline has been kind of steady in both directions. But this kind of data comes from birth and student enrollment. And you can see you follow the babies through and now they're not in fifth, it's seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. They're going to be, their largest enrollment is going to be about eighth grade this year. And everything behind eighth grade is going to be less this year because it'd be down here, right? So this is the trends and the tracks that we get to learn. So the next task is saying forecasting. Kids are not in school. So how do you find that information? This happens to be a state chart that followed births from two thousand eight to twenty eleven. And they fought all the way to twenty fifteen. And then if you took the two thousand eight, they actually enrolled in thirteen, fourteen. And you can see the growth as you go, or in this case, as the babies went from eight ninety-six birth, nine oh eight, eight seventeen, seven ninety-seven, twenty-two, twelve, two, seven ninety-two. And here's the mistake the state made. They had a, they relied on a computer solely. And so the computer then couldn't forecast any more current. So the computer then decided to default to another number. So this is not correct. So when I did Surrey Counties, I said, don't count on that number. When you looked at this, it talks about how many students per school, lower enrollment by thirty-eight students per school. And then going to other factors, the elementaries, per grade, less grade. These are factors that these trends tell you so you can say what school is growing and what school is holding even and what school may be losing ground as they move around. So let's say where does growth happen and where will decline be more prevalent? So we've got to look at history in Stokes County. We have to look at Stokes Counties and get their information, in particular about school age population. And then look at school attendance, if possible, and increases over the last five, ten, or twenty-year increments, if at all possible. And out of those, I'm going to go increase or decrease by school. So I'm going to go quickly, don't look at the numbers. If it's red, students are declining. If it's green, students are increasing. So when you look at this chart down here, you can see everything except one school is decreasing. And when you look at the middle highs, everything but one school is decreasing. So this tells you generally where your district may go. And I talked about where is it? So in Stokes County, the Stokes County Planning Department was very helpful. And they looked up census data, but they started with the Surrey County School Attendance area. They did elementary, so we could do the same and need county's help, but we could do the same in Stokes County by elementary district. And from this district map, the county looked at the census regions and areas and they came up with increases or decreases. So red is decreased and increases. I got to, let me see if I I got to wait for that to disappear, I guess. The dark green, so you've got decreases and increases. So if you look here, in this case, this is closer to Forsyth County and fifty-two coming up and Stokes County over here. So as you went closer to King and Forsyth, this side up US fifty-two had more growth. I was surprised at that particular area, but it had a fairly sizable decline. But that really didn't hurt because that was the most overcrowded school. So it didn't change anything. So that's one way to look at a county. Now I'm going to go, here's a Forsyth County planning. And if you looked at this, they compared it and they took their general planning map. This is not school districts. This is just a general county planning map. And their planners looked at the census and said, everything inside these red circles were areas of decline in youth age population from two thousand to twenty-ten. So they generally told us the northern side of the county was decreasing in population. But we could tell that by looking at the enrollment in the schools decreasing. So that's why this is a good check and balance. And then Forsyth County came out and said, well, the southern side of county is busting wide open. So you can see in here, the southern side of Forsyth was growing. Now this is growing, this was the downtown and all of you know downtown is more urban living came into place in Forsyth. You had a few more students. So just because that's there, that, you got to look at the data. Because this wasn't but about a hundred kids increase, but when you only had a hundred there to begin with, it showed a great percentage increase. So this gets you items to track. We'll need something like that in Stokes. Then we come to square footage combined with school by school enrollment. And if we can identify schools needing to lower the building square footage, not the ADM, the square footage, and that may lower school maintenance and districts may be able to move dollars from a building, you know. If you're like most areas, you have a school and it has several wings that were built over periods of time. So maybe you close the nineteen fifty-one if you need to and keep the rest open. But I can provide square footage comparisons to state recommendations of square foot per student. So I'll hit that one in a second. This is nothing more than number of students in a particular school, square footage, and how many square feet per student. You average it, middle, again averaged, high again averaged. I'm flying through this, but here's the result. So school planning, this happens to be in Surrey County. And school planning Raleigh has eight hundred square foot and over, eight hundred students and over. And an elementary is considered large, medium, small, three hundred. And so Surrey County Schools averaged three hundred students and they averaged a hundred and sixty-four square feet per student, which Title I in a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy square feet a student and a hundred and sixty-eight square feet per student. They're, they were running along with Title I, square foot per student. Same thing on middles. You can see they were running the smaller middle schools, averaging five hundred students. Title I, one eighty-six square feet per student. And then you hit the high schools with seven fifteen, eight hundred is small, seven fifteen average. So this is the square foot per student compared to the state's one seventy square feet per student. So what you get here is a reality check comparing you to the state, other districts and everything about it. It's just a check and balance thing. Now this doesn't necessarily, notice I put the qualifier down here. Because the same report that brought this out, they talked about a school district has to determine what size best serves its students. So a Board of Education can choose what programs, how you use the space, how you sizes a compromise with objective for achievement, safety, road, transportation, and other items. So this does not move away from Board of Education's decision, rather this can guide some of the decisions. It's not telling anyone what to do. It just kind of helps you out a little bit. So I'm going to bring you back to where we were and say, these are things that are possible to find your district enrollment, your square footage, and your growth pattern, should you decide to do such a thing. I am available for questions, should you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Board, any questions?
What's the timeframe it takes to establish such a?
It's going to take several months. It's probably November, December-ish before I could get something together. There's a lot of checks and balances. So it's not like, you know, I can go hammer and number out in no time, but you've got to do it. How long does it take for the county to get the info? It's going to take them a month or two for them to, that you need. So it's a little bit of time. So before the first year.
Usually as far as accuracy, like seventy, eighty, ninety percent, all these studies.
Most of mine have trended pretty close. I'm going to, you know, you gave a percentage. I'm going to say that I could be within five percent of where they should be in four or five years. But if you think you've got births, so you can kind of look at the next four pretty close, can't you? And then you're going to look at a trend that is the trend downward at what percentage or is the trend upward? And unless the county changes its growth pattern, meaning incoming jobs, incoming opportunities, you're probably going to trend in that, but at some point you will bottom out. Right? Move out, move in. I don't know if that answered your question, but it's not an exact.
Yeah, I know it's not an exact science, but you know, I want to make sure it wasn't fifty-fifty or whatever, you know.
Mr. Powell, we've talked several times, and I don't know if I didn't pick up on it before or not, but is there a trend in population, let's say a thirty-year cycle, twenty-five-year cycle, where the baby boomers were there? Then, you know, if there's a bunch of children born that year, in twenty-five years, that will seem to be another group of large young families that may be having kids. And so is there those twenty-five-year swings or so, if you will?
That's a great question. And I'm going to go back into a little pattern and if you have a peak and a valley and next year, the next one, you're going to have a little smaller peak and a little smaller valley. And pretty soon over time, that will level itself out as births stabilize. Your biggest trend chaser is economy. And that's the big piece. We had a group, ORED come into Forsyth while I was there and they looked at Forsyth, Guilford, and other large metropolitans and said Forsyth County's growth potential is excellent. I would think in five years, their growth would go up from move in. It hasn't so much recently for obvious reasons we know. But that growth for enrollment for economic has not come. So ORED and my projections relied on some economic growth that didn't materialize. Your question is good, but the big variable is economic and move in, move out.
Any other questions?
What are we looking at? Cost?
Dr. Rice, we talked about several things.
Well, we, when we first started talking, we were in that five thousand dollar range. But I wanted to look more at the individual school growth and that's going to push it closer in that ten thousand dollar range, which again, I think is very, a very good investment for us as we discuss the future.
I think if we fail the plan, we're planning to fail. It's pretty simple. So I'll make a motion. We move this to action and act on it tonight, awarding the contract per Dr. Rice's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, move it to action. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, we'll move that to
Thank you very much.
Anything else with me or I'll head out?
Thanks for everything.
I think it's good. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
I'll be in contact tomorrow. Thank you.
So it'll be action item D, population study. Okay, discussion item B is a discussion of summer school. Mr. Rose?
Hello, board members. I always want to give you an update. Now that we have finished summer school and all of our teachers getting some much needed rest right now, I want to give you an update of their efforts and what we got accomplished this summer. Start off with high school. I shared with you that one of the biggest problems I saw was our four-year graduation rate, based on the number of credits that our students received. So we want to give every opportunity we could for them to rebound credits. Rebound credits, moving forward to stay with their graduation cohort. We were able to rebound two hundred and seventy-eight credits this summer through the summer school efforts. Also with the high school principals, we met and we've taught some about other opportunities we'll have to gain credits through the possible study skills class where they can work within Odyssey where and recover some credits if needed, moving forward. One thing that we talked about with the Office of Learning Recovery was graduation rate, not this year, but looking three and four years down the road. And the biggest component here is going to be getting these credits rebounded and getting the students back on track with their cohort. So I think we made a big stride towards that this summer with our, with our high schools.
Doug, I'm sorry, Mr. Rose, I'm sorry. I don't mean, I would say I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm interrupting. So I'm sorry to catch you off guard on this, but we did get a memo today from the High School Athletic Association that the board may want to know this information as well. You just said, how many credits were recovered in the high school?
Two hundred and seventy-eight.
Every one of those go into spring semester as far as eligibility goes. So if somebody were to have come up two credits short in the fall, two credits short in the spring, but all of these that were recovered now go into the spring semester, which will help with eligibility. So I know that the, the athletic directors probably got that memo today. I got that memo, but I know you have not. And I wanted the board to know that will help that if they recovered credits from first semester, it will go on to their second semester to help them with athletic eligibility.
Definitely an important component there. All right, so with our middle school, I had just given you the number of students who had signed up to participate. We had a hundred and thirty-three participants with our middle school program. And with this, we divided it out into four ninety-minute blocks. And we're going to talk about I Ready in a little bit. I Ready gave us a weekly breakdown of the major topics to cover. And they aligned all of their curriculum to match that. And we shared that with our teachers and we used that sort of guide, got our planning and to guide the curriculum that we covered so that we hit the major components that they would be responsible for this year and help them be successful for next year. I was extremely pleased with the results that we got. I've given you a chart that has the math breakdown there. And this is based on typical growth. Typical growth is the amount of growth that you would expect a student to meet within one year. When you look at this, I've divided it out into the number of students in that category. I've given you the number of students who showed growth. So if they had a positive growth number, for example, with the very first one there with Chestnut Grove, I have seventeen total students, fourteen showed growth. So those fourteen had a positive number. Three students showed no growth or may have even declined. But when I see that eight of those students had greater than a hundred percent annual growth, that lets me know that we were teaching very concentrated in the curriculum to help them to grow. So I've given you the breakdown there for math. On the first page, and again, out of the hundred and seventeen that completed the assessment, one hundred of them showed growth in math. For reading, I've done the same thing for you on that following page. And again, I'm extremely impressed with the number of students that showed greater than one hundred percent of their typical growth goal there. I was extremely pleased with that. And again, I have to commend our, our teachers on the job that they did this summer. We also put an attendance goal in there. And sort of drew a line in the sand with the students, just to state absolutely no more than five absences. Not every student met that, but I think you can see from the attendance rate being eighty-five for the summer school. Um, these were students that had some attendance problems throughout, many of them. So I thought that attendance number was pretty good as well. Moving through, we've broken down the elementary assessments for you there as well. Um, the ones that showed less than nineteen, and then it lists out the other categories there. You can see a very large percentage that had greater than a hundred percent typical growth. Um, through this summer learning program. Then at the bottom, we give you the total number of students who were assessed. Attendance rates. And then on the last page, um, one item I'll draw your attention to is that Poplar Springs and Walnut Cove had twelve of thirty-four students to obtain Read to Achieve Proficiencies by the end of the summer school. Either through the portfolio passages, iReady, or the Read to Achieve test. That's roughly thirty-five point two-nine percent. Typically, it's around twenty when we conduct the reading camps. So the teachers did, did a solid job this summer, and they are definitely to be commended. So again, it was a great deal of planning. There's a lot of folks who poured their heart into this for the summer, and I think it shows with the results that we have. And, uh, you know, board members, I appreciate you all supporting that effort with the Esser funds. And hopefully this is gonna go a long way to getting our students back on track. And making the students of Stokes County shine even brighter for next year. Do you all have any questions for me regarding the summer learning recovery program?
Any questions from the board?
Good, thank you.
It looks like it was quite a success.
I was real pleased with the, the results. Um, of course, you know, we'd like to see more students participate, see their attendance rate go up, but considering these were students who had not performed as well during the school year, I was pleased with their efforts and and definitely have to commend all the teachers and administrators on their efforts with this too.
Well, and plus you have to remember, and I'm gonna, everyone knows in the cabinet and in the schools, how much I preach about attendance. But you have to remember that some of these people had plans well in advance of summer school. And so if you went on a week-long vacation, you know, you missed, out of thirty days, you missed five out of thirty days, so you missed a sixth of it just because of a planned vacation. And so really, these attendance rate are, are pretty good for a summer school, and again, just the gratitude goes out to the teachers that volunteered their time. Um, there's a significant portion of our staff whose today was their first day off this summer. And so, and they didn't have to do that. And so we asked for volunteers and we had a volunteer army show up. And they did an exceptional job with these students and just really grateful that they, and, and yes, they were compensated, but they still gave up their summer. And we're very grateful for that.
And I think it also speaks to the power of in-person instruction.
Absolutely.
Um, I have a question.
Okay, Miss, Miss.
I do, I do think that everybody worked really hard, and I think the students that went to summer school, you know, they gave up their summer too. And they had a tremendous time with the virtual learning, even though, you know, it was a lot of effort on everybody's part. It was really hard, I feel like, on students and teachers. But I do have to ask this because I see that, you know, there's a lot of compensation that the kids got back and, and, um, so what about the students that didn't go to summer school? Uh, how is that gonna work in the high schools? I, I'm thinking about the high schools right now. Uh, and the middle schools, how is that gonna affect? Say, I was in the ninth grade, okay, and I didn't do well, then I didn't choose to go to summer school. Okay. And so now I have real poor grades, what, what am I looking forward to in the fall?
So as these students come back, and one thing I really want to see, and, and one thing that we talked about in our principal meeting the other day. These students need to have a personal meeting with the guidance counselor. Because, you know, you and I know that you have to get to five credits to be deemed a sophomore. So if that didn't happen, that student is looking at being classified as a freshman again, probably sitting in a freshman homeroom again. So we're gonna have to start doing the planning now to get this student caught up and get them back with their cohort. Because again, if you're not with your four-year cohort, that's gonna be damaging to the student. Um, and their psyche and moving forward. And you know, the big thing is, we want to see them graduate in four years. So what we're gonna start looking at then is meeting with that guidance counselor, seeing the best path to either repeat courses. Or to do credit recovery options through one of our study skills classes, to try to get that student caught up. And if for certain situations, we do have a differentiated diploma. Where, you know, we hold that we have twenty-eight credits required for graduation. Within the state, it's twenty-two. Um, as long as they meet the future-ready requirements, they can apply for hardships and fill out forms for us. So that we can look at kind of personalizing their path. So that they can still graduate. But those are all things that we need to talk about in personalized meetings with these students. So for that student, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, that is not on track to graduate on time, or that has missed credits. We want to go ahead and sit down with them and set that plan in place. But then we get caught back up and graduating four years.
So is that process already started?
We've already discussed it, and, uh, it was taking place over the summer with the students there. Once our other students get back, then we will start those meetings then.
So is there any way that we can, um, maybe next, uh, board meeting, maybe have some numbers that we can look at as to each of the high schools and how many actually dropped out, because I'm really concerned with that. I've known of several students that were really good students. And they've dropped out, and I, they have come from really good homes. And they were doing well up until last March. And so, I wanted to kind of look at those numbers and see how many people have actually, you know, just didn't come back, they, you know, they've dropped out of school. And that's a tragedy. And, and I know you're concerned about that too, and so I'd just like to see those numbers of how many people are having to recover because they didn't come to summer school. And then how many people actually dropped out in West Stokes, North Stokes, South Stokes, I doubt many dropped out at, um, early college, but could have. So if, would that be a way you could get those figures and?
Let me talk with Ann and see if there's an easier way to attain that, to pull it straight from for the dropout data. And see what I can find for you.
Well, one of the first things we do each year, and Ms. Cheek can, uh, I didn't tell her that part of being a director now is to have to speak from principal experience, but you're our newest one on board. Uh, as it's a high school principal, at the first couple of weeks of every year, that's something that we do is reach out to people that dropped out the year before. To try to get them to come back, and that's one of the, the first things we do. Is try to reach out to them and say, let's give it one more go. And so to try to recapture those dropouts, and sometimes we get those.
But you know, do you know yourself, say, like, how many people we had to drop out because of this pandemic?
I don't know off the top of my head, we've seen initial dropout numbers, but I don't have that with me.
I mean, is it a higher rate? I would think it might be, I, I hope not, but I would just like to know that.
And, and I don't remember in comparison, but I, I certainly would assume it's higher than a normal year. Um, but again, we're gonna work to try to get them back in school. Some people that I know that I've talked to, some principals who said that they've talked to kids who said, we're dropping out, but when we can come back face-to-face without masks, we'll come back. But we're not gonna fit it, we're not gonna do, kids were very, so, a lot of kids I heard stories were, did not enjoy high school. The way that it was last year, with coming to ghost town campuses of every other day. And twenty, thirty percent doing online that they never saw. Um, and when you show up, there's three or four kids sitting in a classroom. And, and they didn't like it, and they said, we're leaving until normal is back. So we're certainly gonna give them the opportunity to come back to no, normal this year. And, and invite them back and let them know what the new rules are and that they will have a more normal high school experience, and hope that they resume. That's our goal as well.
Right, and that's, that's that fringe group that I really am concerned about. And so I think that we need to not forget them. And we need to reach out to them because those folks, you know, they're gonna be working and, and maybe they can get a job, maybe they can't, but I feel like as a school system, that's our responsibility. To reach out to them, and who do you, who are you assigning in the schools to do that? Reaching out to these people?
I've talked with the principals, but ultimately be the counselors who are talking about graduation plans.
Okay. And when you say you're gonna try to get that ninth grader that maybe failed, that you're gonna try to get them with their cohort. Are you, are you saying they're just not gonna flat out have to repeat ninth grade?
No, they'll still be classified ninth grader, the way it works with high school is it's based on the number of credits.
Right.
So once they hit five credits, they'll be classified as a sophomore.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, if we can rebound credits to the study hall period. That's one option that we can look at, to maybe get them to catch up. And rejoin their cohort group.
There's also opportunities through virtual public school, online, uh, zero periods, other times to recoup credits along the way as well, to get caught back up to their peer groups. So we offer several different opportunities for people to do that. And that's what he's talking, it's gonna take an individual meeting to set up an individual plan with a student to say, okay, this is where we are now, and when do you want to be graduated by? And so what do we need to do in the meantime? And that's that individual plan.
Because the state just requires twenty-two credits.
Correct.
But what does our county require?
Well, we require the twenty-two for most, or, I mean, the twenty-eight for most, but we do have a differentiated diploma. That again, if, once, if the student has the, the twenty-two required from the state, we can look at still getting them a diploma on time, and we do that every year.
And that's a, um, legitimate diploma, just like the one that's sitting over here.
Yes, ma'am, there's no difference. There's no difference between somebody with twenty-five credits and twenty-eight credits. Their diplomas are the exact same. Their transcripts obviously are different.
Sure.
But their, their diplomas are the same and carry the same weight.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rose, for your work, and Ms. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the discussion of lottery application for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. Ms. Moore?
Yes, in your packet is the request for the approval of the application in order for the county commissioners to draw down the lottery funds, that's part of their, um, module for paying off construction. This is requesting four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it will take the entire school year of lottery money to be dropped for the county to actually, uh, retrieve it all. We have to start the process with the school system, and then we'll submit it to the county commissioners before it can be submitted uh, to, to the state. And we've been doing this for several years, so.
Is the amount the same, four fifty?
Yes, sir, it is. And they usually, right now in lottery, we're getting anywhere from four hundred to five hundred thousand, so usually it's pretty close that they get enough to meet what their request is.
Oh, I wanted to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this takes about every, I not say every penny, but it takes a lot, or the majority of the money that we are allotted for, from the lottery system, is that right?
Right, in their module, they have agreed to take all of the lottery money for construction to use to pay off debt. So several years back, we were able as a school system to use it for different things, like roofing, things like that. But when the module came up to help pay off the debt for the schools that were built for us in the last few years, it was agreed that the lottery would be used for that, so that's why we've not been able to do, use those monies for these other projects, and we've been trying to include them in our capital outlet request.
And who was it that agreed? The schools, our school system with the county commissioners?
In, in order to get the construction started, like for the Nancy Rentals, uh, Poplar, Southeastern Renovations, those projects. When they had a person to come up and do their module of how they could make it work, they included that in that, so that was approved by the commissioners, and by doing it, they have a right to use our lottery money for that, so it's just, it's just been set aside, we've been doing this, I think, since nine and ten.
I know, I know, but is this only for Nancy Rentals, the four hundred and fifty thousand?
This party is, but they could request it for one of the other construction debt projects, but they have chosen right now to, our request has been for Nancy Rentals.
Okay, what bothers me is that, um, this thing's not even paid off to the twenty, twenty-nine.
That's correct.
Twenty-thirty budget year. Because when I first got on the board, we were giving that money, and we're still giving that money.
And that's correct, you, we have, it is a long time.
So how do you ever think that you could build another school? I mean, how do you look forward and say, well, we might like to build another school here, that, that, you know, they're gonna say, well, hey, we didn't pay for Nancy Rentals yet.
We'd have to look at other revenue sources than the, the lottery, the way it is right now through the twenty-nine, thirty school year, you're right.
And if you remember, two or three years ago, it was coming out of our capital money. Was going for debt services.
But this, when I got on the board, this was going for debt services. And I would ask, well, and they'd say, well, you know, a couple more years, a couple more years. Well, a couple more years?
They were saying a couple more years.
Twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, a couple more years.
I, I think they were saying a couple more years till West Oaks and Piney Grove were paid off.
And that's when that, we got the boost in capital. Uh, you know, Mr. Menon Hall talks about him having three and four hundred thousand dollars in capital. Well, there were one point five million roughly, and, and don't quote me on these numbers, these are round estimates, of tax dollars, that sales tax dollars that came in for capital. But the county commissioners said, we're gonna take a million of that and pay debt services and leave you with five hundred thousand. Well, after I came, probably the two years after I came, three years after I came, those debts were paid off, and now we're getting the one point nine, two point one in capital funding. But that lottery is still designated. And so in twenty twenty-nine, theoretically, we could have two point six million in capital, that then you could decide to either pay debt on a new building or maintain and renovate what we have. Uh, again, but that money doesn't get freed up on, from a long time from now.
A long time.
When potentially a whole new group of people sitting around here. I'm sorry.
If we build another school, we're back four on our capital expense budget, and we're, we're selling tin cans trying to pay for roofs.
You couldn't build Nancy Rentals today for what was nine million, you couldn't take that school and build it again for like.
And Ms. Moore, do you know about how much debt service we have now?
Now, I did a chat with Julia back in February, and I, I brought that with me tonight. Uh, to see how much longer the debt was on different projects. For example, the pods that was purchased when Nancy Rentals was built. She said there was four more years to pay on that, and that was like three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The Nancy Rentals and the community college was put in the same package, and that's what you're looking at tonight. And that was, uh, through the time period of twenty-nine, thirty. Papa Springs land was nine more years to pay, and that was like seven hundred and forty-five thousand.
How much?
Seven forty-five.
That's just the land?
Mm-hmm. Southeastern, where we used some of the QZAB, uh, that was like a million four, eight more years to go on that one. And Southeastern and Papa Springs, there was a QZAB and a QSCAB. Uh, between Southeastern and Papa, there was eight more years on that, and that was like, uh, eight point five million. And then the Lawsonville project was a million five, and I'm kind of rounding those off now, and that was nine more years. So there's a lot of debt still out there for several more years.
What did you say, the Nancy Rentals, the first one?
Nancy Rentals, uh, what she's done is actually combined Nancy Rentals and the community college as a project, and it was almost eleven million. and it was almost eleven million for the both of them.
It was our total?
And seventy-eight point twenty-two percent of that eleven million goes to Nancy Reynolds. And actually, I have not totaled all those up as a total, but I can do that for you, so.
But you're saying Lawsonville is nine more years till we pay that off?
Mm-hmm.
And that's one point eight million?
One point five.
Oh, one point.
Yes.
That was the new wing renovation there.
Yes.
Most of the projects just set up on a twenty-year term?
They are. Um, so like Nancy Reynolds started in nine, ten, so that's true. It's, it's, it's a long time.
And you said Nancy Reynolds pods?
We bought the pods when they had to be relocated.
The mobile units, the trailer?
Yeah, yeah.
They were, they were at Pinnacle, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we still have those pods?
They're still being paid for, yeah.
Do we still have them, or do we sell them, or?
That's early college, isn't it?
Yeah. And we're still paying them?
The county is still picking them up.
But our final debt number comes off nine, ten, or ten, eleven? I mean, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-nine, thirty, or thirty thirty-one?
Twenty-nine, thirty, I think it's when the.
Is the last.
I think that's when, well, most of them, yes.
If you start planning two years before that, you'll have some money to build some stuff.
We'll have a mortgage burning party.
What's that?
We'll have a mortgage burning and.
Yes.
Uh. Groundbreaking party all.
But it, you know, and, a- again, and, and that's why a long-range plan is important. We may not have any money now, but in twenty thirty, we may. And so we've got to have an idea of where it would be the best to put it at that time, um, to go ahead with something. So, you know, I, and that's, that's staggering, but it's just the realities.
But just because we have this debt now doesn't mean that we can't find other funded sources.
They have the, I guess if their financial module will allow them to have more debt would be the key.
Correct. The, the scary part is, is once we have that debt, how much will they take out of our usable cap, yearly capital funding? Because it's expensive to maintain fifty-year-old buildings. And if you take half of it away, you're where we were eight years ago, ten years ago, and nobody wants to think about that because when you get three hundred thousand dollars in capital to keep up with nineteen buildings, it's impossible. You can't put on a roof a year. Um, you can barely paint.
So my point was bringing this up, you know, we've got a lot of the new board members, and I know they see that, but sometimes we all need to be reminded that when we're looking into long-range plans, and we need to, that we, you know, where's our funding going to come, and are we going to have support from the people we need when the time comes?
And that's why it's very important to stay in tuned to state and federal legislatures, whether they're talking about an infrastructure package, if there's funding for schools, renovation or construction, whether it's statewide bond referendums or a couple of years, one of the budgets that didn't get signed. I want to say had thirteen million dollars coming to Stokes County.
Right.
And that would, didn't get signed. So we didn't get that amount of money. And so there are other ways to fund these things, but we have to be, be able to be sure that we're aware of them and be able to advocate for our school district when those times come.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Real quick, did that need to go to action tonight? Okay.
Uh, discussion, uh, discussion agenda D, uh, discussion of policy, five thousand series.
Board, just real quickly, in your packet, you have your spreadsheet for the five thousand series policy. Mr. Johnson is not here to go over them tonight, but he will talk about them more in depth at the next meeting. But, uh, they're in your folder, and they're here for your review. If you have any questions between now and the next meeting, please reach out to Mr. Johnson or myself, and we'll be happy to answer those questions.
Okay. Uh, discussion agenda E, discussion of budget amendment. Ms. Moore?
Okay, this budget amendment does go back for the twenty twenty-one school year. We received some additional Medicaid money that we were not aware we were going to get. So fifteen thousand five eighteen fifty-seven. This needs to be, uh, included as an amendment in order to, to close out the school year. And this one, if possible, we have alters coming next week, does need to go to action.
Okay. Any questions about that?
I make them.
No questions? Do we need to move it to action? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we remove current expense fund eight, amendment three, to action.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion to second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? So that'll be action, uh, agenda item E. That'd be amendment number three. Current expense fund. Okay, uh, next we have discussion of iReady contract. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, sir. Board members, I'm going to move through this rather quickly, and just to kind of let you know what is in the packet for your review. We have shared iReady twenty twenty-one school year data results. This is some of the information that we have meetings with iReady periodically, and they will share with us on our latest results with our beginning of year, middle of year, end of year testing cycles that we do with them. Um, just to let you know what is there, we've shared placement distributions from fall to spring for math and reading. Within both math and reading, you can see a clear increase in the students who are performing on grade level. And you can see a strong reduction in the students who are two or more grade levels behind, which is what we want to see as we continue with iReady instruction through the year. We also share this data broken down by grade level. In kindergarten, you'll notice that no students are placed in the red column. And that's just because they can't be two years behind at that time. The final pages of the results within this display national norms based on pre-COVID distributions. The national results for school students for twenty twenty-one, NC results, and lastly, district results compiled the last two columns. We do have a lot of work to do within iReady. As we move forward, I do want to incorporate the iReady toolbox usage more, uh, to address student needs. That's something we can tailor very clearly to their instruction. This summer, iReady developed clear learning goals for summer school. They were a great learning partner for us in this. Uh, they create a week-by-week pacing that highlight the major topics of the grade levels. By using this pacing, we were very successful in summer school along with the efforts of our teachers. iReady does provide us with a consistent measure of student growth from kindergarten through eighth grade. And it's been extremely helpful in reporting progress to parents, documenting growth, and providing data to our administrators to make decisions about instruction, especially in the midst of pandemic when our data was scarce. So again, I just wanted to share with you some of the results there for, um, what this school year looked like with the end of the year. And then also directly behind that, in your packet, you do have the iReady renewal quote for this year. Again, this has been something that's been extremely beneficial as we are talking the same language, reading and math, K through eighth grade. Um, it helps us tremendously in the planning that we are doing. So I would like to, to ask that we renew our contract with iReady moving forward for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Rose?
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The teachers have been pleased with that, haven't they?
Yeah, and there's some feedback within that on the last couple.
I see that. I'm sorry, Mike.
That's all right.
Make a motion to move it to action. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that will be action item F.
Thank you, Board.
iReady contract renewal. Okay. Ms. McGee, did you have something on that too? Was that, did he cover everything? He's good at that, isn't he? Okay, uh, discussion item, uh, G, uh, discussion of interactive boards replacement contract.
Board, uh, as you know, last week, we had a special meeting to look at those contracts. Um, and after further review of those, Mr. Johnson met with a professor at the School of Government to find out more about technology contracts because they have intellectual properties that make a com- normal competitive bid service for, say, like, a septic tank removal, it makes it more difficult. For example, if you're bidding out cars, there's a huge difference between a Toyota Tercel, no knocking them, um, I will use one I have, a Toyota Camry versus a Corvette. Um, they're both cars, but if you just look at price, you're always going to get the Camry over the, over the Corvette. But due to intellectual properties, if there's something you want, like an electric car that's self-driving, Tesla has an intellectual property there. So after speaking with Mr. Johnson, um, he would suggest rejecting all bids and rebidding the process, using intellectual properties to get the type of smart boards with the features that our teachers want.
Type of interactive boards?
Interactive boards, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
A replacement interactive board.
So, uh. Do we need a motion to say that we're rejecting the bids?
Do we want to move it to action, and then that's where the motion will come?
Uh, we would need to move it to action to reject it and, and move on.
Make a motion to move the rejection of bids to action.
Okay, have a motion?
Did I need to read that?
Get it to action.
When we do it in action.
Okay.
So we got a motion to move it to action?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, that'll be moved to action item G, interactive board replacement contract. Okay, uh, discussion of MOU with Life Bright Community Hospital of Stokes.
Board members, you'll see in your packet a MOU that is, uh, between Life Bright Community Hospital of Stokes and Stokes County Schools. This is to provide employees and retirees with, uh, wellness lab panels if they choose as an outreach benefit to the school system. Uh, this comes at a minimal fee and something that has been in place as an outreach for four to five years with Life Bright, so. Mr. Johnson has reviewed the MOU, and I'm happy to take any questions on that. I would like to request that it be moved to action tonight so we can get that out to our staff tomorrow.
Make a motion to move it to action.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. That will be action item H. Okay, uh, discussion item I, uh, discussion of Insight Human Services contract for drug testing.
This contract has been in place for many years as well. Um, you'll see that the services provided by Insight include drug testing for our student drivers and students that are, uh, participating in extracurricular activities at the high school level. In addition, Insight does provide substance abuse, family education, and substance abuse treatment, as well as tobacco education classes. And again, Mr. Johnson has reviewed this MOU, and I would like to request that it be moved to action as well tonight.
Okay. Do we need to move the, uh, Insight Human Services contract for drug testing to action? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to move the contract for services for Insight Human Services to action.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion to second. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, so that will be discussion, I mean, I'm sorry, action item I, Insight Human Services. Or drug testing. Okay. I guess it. All of our discussion agenda, so now we're going to move into action. Uh, the action agenda, uh, approval of personnel and coaching.
Make a motion to approve personnel and coaching.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh. Uh.
Okay. Uh, action agenda item B, approval of MOU agreement with Stokes County Health Department and School Nursing Services.
I make a motion to approve the MOU agreement with State's County Health Department and School Nursing Services.
Now, is that the, uh, was that already on the, uh, agenda?
That's what we discussed last time, uh.
That's different, what we just discussed, the MOU we just discussed here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was from the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
The last regular meeting?
This was for the school nurse funding initiative to allow the extra nurses in our schools.
Okay. Do I have a motion, Ms. Messick, I think, right?
Yes.
Second. Mr. Rogers, second. All in favor?
Uh.
Approval of Stokes County Department of Social Services?
This was for our homeless children and our students in foster care transportation services.
I make a motion that we approve the State's County Department of Social Services.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh, action item D, the population study from, uh, Mr. Powell that we heard tonight.
Dr. Rose, what's your spending limit?
Actually, the board doesn't have to approve this contract, uh, because my spending limit is twenty, twenty-five thousand. So we should be well under that, but I just.
I make a motion, we authorize Dr. Rose to use prudence in awarding a population study so that we can determine our planning for the future. You got all that, Pam?
Just recorded.
Mr. Rogers, you may want to get a little closer to your microphone, too, so we can't hear you.
Do you hear me? Make a motion, we authorize Dr. Rose to use his prudent judgment in selection of a population plan so that we can plan for the future.
It's recorded.
Have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, action item E is the budget amendment current, for the current expense fund. Three, I think it is. Ms. Moore?
I make a motion that we, um, accept the current expense fund eight, amendment three.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, uh, Ms. Messick, second, by Mr. Bryant. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, the, uh, action item F is the iReady contract renewal, renewal. We heard from, uh, Mr. Rose tonight.
Make a motion to approve the iReady contract as presented by Mr. Rose and his wonderful.
I, I second.
Do we have a motion with a second? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, G, action item G is interactive board replacement contract.
I make a motion that the Board of Education reject the current bids received for interactive panels and re-initiate the selection process for interactive panels utilizing the various procurement methods applicable to technology goods and services under both state and federal laws and regulations.
Okay.
Do you got all that, Pam?
I wrote that for you.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a, uh, motion with a second on the interactive boards. Uh, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay, uh, action item H is the MOU with Life Bright, uh, presented tonight by Mr. Jones.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation for the MOU Life Bright for the assistance of our, uh, employees.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay. You have a motion with a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. And action. And action item I is the, uh, Insight Human Services for Drug Testing, the contract.
I make a motion.
Presented by Mr. Jones tonight.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the Insight Human Services, um.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion with a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's, uh, I think that's everything we had on action.
Yes, sir.
Um, information and announcements?
Just a couple of things. You see fundraisers in your packet as well as a copy of the traditional school calendar and the early college calendar. I do want to make mention of our next board meeting, the 16th of August at 6:00 PM. Uh, also, that morning at 7:30 AM, we'll have convocation, starting with a breakfast that morning at West Oaks High School, and hope you are able to join us there.
The convocation program will start at 8:30, but breakfast will start at 7:30.
So that's not on our thing, is it? It's not, it really, okay, so staff returns and say that again.
It'll be the morning of August 16th.
Mm-hmm.
And breakfast will begin at 7:30 AM. And the program.
I couldn't hear you one. Oh, good, good. Oh, that's fine, yeah.
And that is at, uh, West Oaks?
At West Oaks, yes, sir.
And Pam's gonna send us out a email reminding us on that.
Um, is that a convocation that night?
It's, it's just convocation. We're not doing, in the past, we've done the convocation and the professional development for a couple of days. This is just a convocation, welcome back, feed the staff breakfast, do a few little fun items. Um, Ms. Jessup, help me, I'm struggling. Teacher of the year, principal of the year, real quickly.
What time?
Uh, let's say 3 o'clock. Oh, it will be done at 3:30.
So what was the date on that?
The 10th, Tuesday, the 10th.
That'll be all, also in an email. You'll remind us all of that, keep us all straight.
Yes, yes, sir.
Good deal. Okay. Anything else? I think that's the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Welcome, Mr. Tedder, you survived.
Can I flip the switch now?
Yeah.